All right, it is at, it is 6:00 PM and I'm gonna call the City of Iowa City Formal Meeting to Order for October 3rd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Here.
Burgess.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Well, welcome, everyone. We are going to move on to Item Number 2A, which is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Iowa City is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Iowa, in, living in and visiting Iowa City. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk for, from fire. And whereas home fires killed 2,980 people in the United States in 2080, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 490, um, 400,095 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and three out of five home fires, death result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas half of the home fires' death result from fires reported at night between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, when most people are asleep. And whereas Iowa City first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Iowa City residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape", effectively reminds us to look for places fire could start, listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and learn two ways out of every room. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, here, hereby proclaim October 9th, 15, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city and urge everyone to install smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts during Fire Prevention Week 2022 and year round. And to receive this today is Fire Marshal Brian Gier. So we'll welcome him at this time.
I suppose I should probably speak a little bit here on this. Fire Prevention Week was started by the National Fire Protection Association in 1922 to commemorate the Great Chicago Fire that occurred on, um, in 1871, on the 9th of that, that, um, of October. So they've historically, it had, Fire Prevention Week is, is on the week that has the 9th in it. So in 1925, President Calvin Coolidge, he actually proclaimed Fire Prevention Week a national observance, which makes it the longest-running public health observance in the country. So that's, that's kinda neat there, too. And, um, what, what we heard in the proclamation, there's a few things that, that I'd like to just talk about. The, the theme for this year is "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape." So things that we wanna make sure of is work with your family or the people you live with to try to make a plan on how to get out of the house in case there was a fire. I actually was at a fire yesterday just across from my house in North Liberty. So, I mean, I was woken up and people know I'm on the fire department, so they, you know, I had to go over and assist a little bit with there. And fortunately, the person that was in the house was able to get out. But it, it's something that when, when you get in a, in a fire, it is really dark. It's, the smoke is, is really bad for you and, and just a few breaths of it, and, and sometimes it's, it's heated as well. It can be disastrous. So make sure you have a plan that, that you can, you can get out of the house. Once you're out of the house, have a meeting place. You wanna be able to have accountability for the people that are with you. So we'll do that. Smoke alarms, I hope everybody has those. You know, check those every month. Push the little test button on it, make sure it works. If they're older than 10 years old, you may have to pull them down to look at the bottom to see the date. They should be replaced. And no, no two ways out of every room. If it's your bedroom, obviously the door's the, the primary way. If, if that's blocked or you feel heat out there, you have a window to get out of. Always look for two ways to get out. And, you know, make sure you, you practice some of this stuff, too, especially if you've got younger kids. Just make sure that, that you can get them out and be safe. Other than that, thank you all for what you do and, and hopefully, you know, you'll stay fire safe and, and I think that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thanks to you and all of the firemen and, or the fire staff that work. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. And the other thing is we're starting back into the schools next week. We usually have a, a little skit or a show, so each of the, each of the elementaries K through 3 are gonna get the opportunity to see that live again. The last two years, it was all virtual and it didn't quite touch as much as it should've. So this, this should be good to get back to somewhat normal.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on to Item Number 2B, which is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city recognizes the fact that Iowa City is built upon the homelands of Native American nations to whom we owe our existence, commitment, and dedication, and without whom the building of the city would not have been possible. And whereas the area of Iowa City was within the homelands of Iowa, Mesquite, and Sauk, and because history is complex and time goes far beyond memory, we also acknowledge the ancient connections of many other indigenous people here. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations-sponsored international conferences on discrimination against indigenous populations in the Americas. And whereas the City of Iowa City recognizes a shared responsibility to honor our nation's indigenous roots, history, traditions, and cultural contribu- contributions, whereas the city strongly supports that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the indigenous people of the region. And whereas the city is dedicated to opposing systemic racism towards indigenous people, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income equality, income inequality, and exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crises. And whereas the city empowers our residents to commit to understanding and addressing injustices impacting indigenous people. And whereas the city strongly encourages educational institutions, businesses, and other organizations to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day and join the city in committing to opposing systemic racism and injustices. Now therefore, I Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the second Monday of October each year as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Iowa City. And to receive this, um, I understood that we had someone online to receive this, but I don't see. So Sakawas Nobis, if you are present online, please raise your hand. I don't see her, but she is the founder and executor, and the executive director of the Great Plains Action Society, uh, who was, um, a, a part of the indigenous community and, um, just thank her for all that she do within our community and through her organization. All right, we will move on to Items Number 3 through 7, which is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
No move, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. And I'm gonna invite Julie Seidel Johnson up to just talk about one item from here, which is 6F. And 6F, that title is Mercer Park Ball Fields and Courts. Welcome.
Great. So what this action will do is start the process on public improvements next summer at Mercer Baseball Fields and the Mercer Pickleball Courts, Tennis Courts, and hopefully City Park Tennis Courts. The funding for the project is the 2023 CIP project. There's 950,000 for the baseball field complex and 175 originally placed in there for the City Park Tennis Courts. As we've gone through the recreation facilities and program master plan, uh, we've really been, uh, gotten a lot of feedback about the pickleball courts at Mercer, so we are shifting some of the focus to also include the, those courts. The baseball improvements, things like fencing, lighting, playability of the fields, but then also work to the kind of the plaza concessions, fan, fan area in the middle of the fields, potentially re, uh, relighting Field Number 4. I have to tell you that our list of, of potential wants for this project is much larger than the budget, so what this will do once we get our, our consultant on board is start our stakeholder meetings, both with the school district, the baseball associations, the pickleball players, tennis enthusiasts, to prioritize which things get done. Meaning, there'll be some done on each of these areas, but the amount done on each may vary a little bit. For the pickleball courts specifically at Mercer, uh, we're well aware of the cracking on the courts and believe that that will probably take a full, a full, um, replacement of this underground surfacing there. Now, it probably does not do enough to add a roof over the top or some of the other amenities that the pickleball players have asked for, but we will be talking with them and working with them on potentially some fundraising or some other things for site furnishings and, and that sort of thing. Same with the baseball fields, the list is much longer than probably what the budget will, um, accomplish, so we will look at things for safety, playability, energy efficiency, um, fan experience, those kind of things, accessibility paths first, um, and then work our way down the list with those. Does that answer? Yeah, okay.
Quick question on the pickleball courts. So is that, uh, actual repairs or replacement or whatever, would that be next summer or the summer after?
So this money is for the construction year of 2023. So our hope is to get through the, the, um, stakeholder meetings and design and bid it out January, February, and so it would be construction next summer, early fall, and the baseball season will dictate some of that. Um, but similar to what we just talked about with other projects, if we can couple those together into one contract, I think that would be better.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Julie. All right. Anyone from the public like to address a topic that is on our consent agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in person, please step to the podium. CNNO1, council discussion.
I just had a quick comment about 6B, the lobbyist, if that, if this would be an appropriate time to do that. We had in the past taken some time, I think, in a work session to talk about topics that we would like the lobbyist to follow up on, and so I'd like us to maybe keep that in mind and schedule a time, a work session to, if, if we have some, especially you, Janice, if you have some of those topics that, uh, we want the lobbyist to keep an eye on and our legislators to keep an eye on. And on that note, there was a list in there about their, their scope of services, and it mentioned regularly communicating, uh, with the city, and I'm not sure whether, do they do that? Do they talk to, uh, the city manager? Cause, um, it, it mentioned also like attending up to two city council meetings, and I don't recall them ever doing that, but I'd, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see better communication between the council, the city, uh, and, uh, the lobbyist. But that's all.
Yeah, I can speak to that just a bit, cause, um, I'm actually going to be the one that's going to be focused out of the city manager's office, working with the, the state lobbyist.
Okay, good.
So we will have an opportunity to have some legisla- legislative priorities that the council will vote on. I think this is something that's been done in the past, and so we will be looking at that and, and there'll be, from what I understand, um, pretty robust communications, um, during the legislative, uh, session with, uh, the city manager's office and, and the consultants, so.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. Any other discussion by council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. We're on to Item Number 8, which is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak about a topic that is not listed on our agenda. We will allow three minutes for each person to speak. If you're online, please raise your hand, and in person, there is a sticker in the back if you wanna fill it out, or you can, yep, place it in the basket, or there's a sign-in sheet at the desk, at the podium. Welcome. Please give us your name and the city you're from.
Great, thank you. Amy Kritkowski here from Iowa City. Again, to express my ongoing continued support for keeping the current design of City Park Pool. I have another letter that I would like to give to you, um, if, if I could, uh, it's, it's wet. It was in my bag and the water bottle, so you can just pretend that it's been swimming. It's sort of appropriate for that. I apologize. If you'd like me to send you some non-wet copies, I'll be happy to do that. Um, I just, I, I, I keep coming back to these meetings and this one-way communication process is just, uh, it's a little frustrating. And given the community, um, you know, output of support for all the pools, I think it would be a really, really great idea if the council, Parks and Rec, or whomever, can explain what is, what the process is, or where we're at in the process, what's going to happen next, when things are going to be voted on, because rumors are, are abounding. And I know you can't, you know, respond to me, but I did, you know, I've, I've sent three letters now to the city council. I have, I've emailed, uh, people, I've spoken to a few of you, I sent emails out to, um, the rest of the city council who I had not yet spoken to. I haven't heard back. That's fine, we're all very busy, I totally get it, but it would be really great, um, for the community to understand exactly what's going on. And this, what this letter gets into is something that I mentioned at the last council meeting, which is that I think you're making a very, very big, important decision for something that's going to impact this community, and it doesn't seem to me, from the information that I've read, that you have all the information you need in order to make a, a responsible decision. It seems to me that we don't really know exactly what's wrong with the City Park Pool. So instead of just throwing the whole pool out, maybe a little bit more work is done to try to, you know, needs to be done to, to figure out exactly what's going on with the pool. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
No move.
Second.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Would anyone else like to make a comment during this time on any agenda item, on any item that is not on our agenda? If you're online, please raise your hand. CNNO1 online or in person. We're gonna move on to Item Number 9, which are planning and zoning matters, and 9A is rezoning Cardinal Heights. This ordinance conditionally rezones in approximately 27.68 acres of property located east of Camp Cardinal Boulevard and west of Camp Cardinal Road, from interim development, research park zone to low-density multifamily zone with a planned development overlay. And could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
No move, Thomas.
Second, Burgess.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. In person, please step to the podium. CNNO1, council discussion.
I'd just like to comment again on this item, his, I, I believe that as members of the city council, uh, I've heard many of you over time, um, say how important it is for you to hear from your constituents. Uh, you would like them to know and feel that their, their voice matters and that you're listening to them. And I believe that it's a critical part of being an elected official, to be able to listen to what is being said. Uh, and we offer many ways for the public to offer their input, listening posts, public hearings, public comment, time during council meetings and commission meetings, various surveys, and of course emails, letters, and phone calls. And for the most part, I, I feel that this is an appropriate development, uh, for this area, and I'm happy to see growth on the west side. Uh, however, I don't feel that the concerns raised by the nearby residents were adequately addressed. They raised many valid, valid concerns, and it was not, uh, not stated that it was NIMBY. We'd heard that many times, several projects about, not in my backyard, but they did not say that. They didn't have that kind of attitude, uh, nor were they extremely, primarily concerned about their property values. Uh, they focused on concerns about, uh, stormwater drainage and reduction of the woodlands. And frankly, I'm concerned about the loss of woodlands. The developer admits to a drastic removal of woodland that impacts 55.8%. 12.7, point eight acres out of 22.9 acres would be removed. And I would be willing to accept this development, subject to changes that eliminate the development on the north slope, uh, which would preserve those woodlands, um, which would then show some environmental responsibility on the part of the developer. And I would ask my fellow council members to please listen to these, uh, concerns raised by these community members and pause this development, uh, until their concerns can be adequately addressed. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
No.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to one. All right. So we are on to Item Number 9B, which is a Preliminary Platte, Planned Development Overlay and Sensitive Areas Development Plan, Cardinal Heights. Resolution approving the Preliminary Platte, Planned Development Overlay and Sensitive Areas Development Plan of the Cardinal Heights subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Can I get a motion to approve?
No move.
Second, Harmson.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Harmson, and we're gonna welcome Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. I'll just have a brief presentation. This particular application goes along with the one, uh, the rezoning that you just completed a moment ago. It's the preliminary plat for the area bounded in white outline here. Again, the applicant is Navigate Homes, and they've been requesting the rezoning and now this final, the subdivision of this, and so the plating of this into Card- into Cardinal Point Heights. That would eventually allow for the development of 44 attached single-family homes or duplexes, a four-town home apartments on one lot and a multifamily apartment, uh, consisting of approximately 30 units. The proposed preliminary plat contains the lots to facilitate that development. This is, uh, showing the plat oriented north-south, as we're kind of accustomed to seeing, even though most of their submittal was more of an east-west orientation. Um, it does show the development of the street network, connecting to existing road network to the west, uh, allowing for future connection to the east. No real connections to the north and south due to the, um, location of sensitive features, as was mentioned, woodlands, and the fact that the development to the north of it did not leave any stub streets to connect to, and it is already developed with a loop street to the north. Again, here's the same subdivision tilted now, so that the north is to the left-hand side. Just talking a little bit about cul-de-sacs, while the comprehensive plan and our subdivision of ordinances do discourage cul-de-sacs, they do allow for them in certain circumstances, primarily when it can be demonstrated that there is a reason, um, not to disturb other areas with a street cut-through, um, in areas where there's environmental constraints like sensitive areas or limitations to connecting to other streets, as I've mentioned, no real need to connect to, uh, to the north when there's not a stub street to connect to. Um, the design of this cul-de-sac is within the length limits, there's a 900-foot limit on cul-de-sacs, um, in length when they do occur, this one is only 560 feet in length. When we review subdivisions, we look at comprehensive plan compliance, as well as any conditions that were included in a rezoning, in this case, the rezoning that just occurred, and then as we do, uh, also review the ordinances for subdivision, uh, design. This has been found to be, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan as part of that rezoning process. The density of development here is much lower than the comprehensive plan envisions, primarily because of those sensitive features and avoiding them, um, and orienting development away from those. Talking about conditions that have been placed, there was only one condition on that rezoning that just occurred, it had to do with cost sharing for future road improvements, and that would be accomplished in the future with, uh, payment of those fees before issuance of building permit. And we also reviewed the built, the primary, the preliminary plat subdivision code, um, we've done that as part of the rezoning in part with open space and the design of the, um, overlay district plan, so I won't get into that. And just to highlight that we are here at the green segment in the development process, having completed the rezoning now, this is the preliminary plat. It would be followed eventually with a final plat that would just come to council, and then eventually staff review of site, um, site plans for the multifamily developments, and then issuance of building permits. So based on a review of the relevant criteria for subdivisions, staff did recommend approval with no conditions. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with that and also forwarded, uh, a recommendation of approval from their August 3rd meeting. That concludes staff report, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Hearing none. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please step forward at this time. If you're online, please raise your hand. CNNO1, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Taylor.
No.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes six to one. Item Number 10 is Roret South Trunk Sanitary Sewer. Resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interests necessary for construction of the Roret South Trunk Sanitary Sewer Project. And I'm gonna open the public hearing, and I'm gonna welcome our staff. Welcome, Joe.
Joe Walter from Engineering, and I'm the project engineer on this project. So I'll just walk you through the, um, a little bit about the project overall, and then we'll talk about the property acquisition. So this project's located from, uh, almost at Kiwanis Park, Abbey and Bury. It's going to go down Abbey Lane, across Mormon Trek Boulevard, uh, along a existing sewer easement that, uh, is south of Rushmore Drive, and then we'll cross, uh, under Highway 218. Uh, this project generally includes, uh, about a half-mile of 30-inch diameter, uh, trunk sewer. Uh, we'll be using trenchless construction underneath the highway, uh, per the DOT's recommendation. We'll have new, uh, sanitary manholes, new sanitary sewer service connections on Abbey and along the permanent easement on the west side of Mormon Trek. We'll be abandoning the old collection line that was on Abbey. Uh, storm sewer pipe, as well as water main features and, uh, storm inlets will all be improved. The street will be completely replaced on Abbey, and a big, uh, portion of the first part of Rushmore will also be replaced. We'll have driveway apron replacements, uh, several sidewalk improvements. So to get access to the west side of Highway 218, we cannot access it off of the DOT properties, the, the grades on the side of the highway, plus the restrictions of the use of the highway don't allow us to do that. We do need access to both sides of the highway to be able to set our materials on one side, be able to bore through, and then pull the new pipe through, um, the casing, uh, install the casing, and install the new sewer pipe. And so we have been in contact with, um, the, uh, Steve Carson, the Carson family, as well as, um, Allen Development that owns this property now, and, uh, they suggested the route that we're taking, uh, that's highlighted here in blue. The, the blue rectangle, uh, towards the highway, that's the lay-down area we'll be proposing, and then the final area there is the area for the contractor to be able to set up their equipment to do the directional, uh, the boring and the directional drilling across the, the highway. This is just kind of another look at the exact same thing, but it, it, it highlights that path that we're taking for the temporary easement. Again, this is required because it's ag, it's agricultural land, and we're doing an acquisition on that. Just a little bit about the schedule, so a lot of this is, um, uh, still a little bit up in the air, but we would be aiming towards a late fall or early winter bid on this. We would like to start construction in April and finish in November. So, and Strand and Associates has been our design engineer on this. So that ends my presentation.
Could you please sort of give everyone a sense of the contact that you've already had, because I know it's been extensive with the homeowners in the area?
Yeah. So this is particularly, this item's about the agricultural land, but we have, to answer your question on the other property, so we have been, on this property, we've been in contact with both the Carson family, as well as Jesse Allen. On the east side of the highway, west of Mormon Trek, is the Mormon Trek Village Condominiums Association, Homeowners Association. We've had several meetings with them. Two of them have been onsite, two of them have been virtual. So they've been invited to both of the public information meetings that we've had for all of the neighbors on this project. There is only one temporary easement that's along Abbey, and that was at the request of that particular property owner. They requested us to extend their private sewer up into past where our permanent easement goes to accommodate avoiding a large pin oak tree in their yard. So that was at the request of that particular property owner.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Joe, for the route of the easement that's through the agricultural land, you mentioned that that was kind of recommended by the landowners. Can you just speak to what types of factors are involved in locating that?
It's pretty much the ridge.
Okay.
So there's a divide in the property, and they wanted us to stay up on the drier, the high ground is going to be drier. They're also going to be looking at doing some work on that property at some point, and this aligned with some of the areas that they were going to be doing some of their, doing some of their work, maybe starting next year. I don't know. That, again, they have to go through a process to get to that point. They're not quite there yet.
Because this is just for kind of driving our equipment in and out to get to the west side of the highway?
Exactly. Yeah, trucks and equipment. I imagine some of it they'll be unloading at the very entrance and driving it in. Other things they'll have to drive all the way down to unload the pipe and the rock and the material that they're going to have to get down there.
Great. Thank you.
One of the themes that we've had tonight is talking about supply chain issues. Does, do you have any concerns about the timeline that is in place right now?
I think we're all concerned about that. The particular materials that we were using at this point, we're not, we're not getting any sense of that we're not going to be able to get those materials. We specifically went away from certain materials that we were considering because they're just not available. So the materials that we're using generally are pretty readily accessible. So there's always a chance that that won't be the case. We do have a long construction window for this. Neither designer nor the city staff thinks it's going to take from April till November necessarily, but we give longer timeframes, first to get a little better bid so that the contractor has some flexibility when they want to fit that in, and the second would be if we do get some delays at the front end, we still have a good window of opportunity in the late spring, summer, and early fall to still get this done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. If you're in the auditorium, please come forth. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Burgess. Second, Alter.
Council discussion?
This is really essential to, to the possibility of further development on the west side. It's sort of the gateway to more development. It's not just, and it's been, I think it's been in the planning for a long time.
Roll call, please.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Item number 11 is American Legion Road Speed Limit. Ordinance amending Title IX and Title Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter III, and Title Rules of the Road, Section VI, and Title Speed Restrictions, Subsection B, and Title Exceptions to Eliminate the 35-Mile Per Hour Speed Zone for American Legion Road. This is second consideration, and staff has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring that ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand, and if you're present in the council chambers, please step forward. Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Weiner.
Second, Taylor.
Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're at item number 12, which is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. 12A is Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission has two vacancies to fill on expired terms effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2023. Correspondence, yeah, all right. So could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Burgess.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Council discussion about appointments. We had, and I guess I kind of want to just say that we have two for six applicants. And council, we know that we had a recent resignation, so we could actually go forth with two individuals, should we choose, or if we wanted to only go with one. Then I think we probably need to make that clarification now, and maybe give more individuals or more applicants time. So are we wanting to go with two applicants at this time, or see how everything plays out with who we promote first?
I can appreciate wanting to give folks some more time to be aware that we have the second vacancy, but I'm also aware of the fact that this court commission has just had so many obstacles and roadblocks, and we really need to get them in full swing. And so I would be in favor of doing the two at this time.
I would concur, and we also have some really good applicants, or that it's not like we're sort of struggling with no one who appears qualified.
So I hear two going forward. Is there any other thoughts on the other way? Yeah, I don't have strong feelings either way. I think your first statement was, you know, allow more individuals time to recognize that there is an opening. But I'm okay with seeing if we, there's two individuals at least that I thought would be great, but let's see where people are.
The one name that, there are a number of people I would actually be interested in, but the one name that was the strongest, one of the strongest to me was Marie Krebs. I agree with that. She has a really, really strong background, also comes with some strong recommendations.
I agree, and she was recommended by Christina Nobles, who's a current commission member, and I think that always speaks highly of a current commission member feels that that strongly about someone that they think they can work with them. So I would agree, Marie would be a great fit.
I agree.
As do I.
Okay, Marie Krebs, sounds like she has majority. Anyone else?
There were a couple of others, but one person who I thought could be an interesting and good fit on the commission was Lauren Merritt.
I'd had her as an option, a great option.
Yeah. I think she has an interesting background. I think that additionally, you know, she has clearly, you know, had a longtime career, and I think that that could speak well to kind of the current dynamic, to sort of bring, you know, again, get an additional perspective, someone who has a lot of experience in civil service, and I think that she would be very good.
Any other thoughts? We've heard about Marie, and I do support Lauren. Any other individuals?
Can support Lauren as well.
I can support Lauren. I like Catherine Trams, I'd like she would be a really good fit also, but I would go with Lauren if everyone else is.
Absolutely. You know, also a shout out to, honorable mention for Siranya Subramanian, if I pronounced that correctly, who did, I think, put on there, the choice was for HCDC anyway, so that might be something to keep in mind should we have an opening on that particular commission.
Yeah, and yeah, she was one of my selections as well. All right, it sounds like we do have majority support for Maria Krebs and Lauren Merritt as I'm looking side by side, and could I get a motion to appoint? Now, let me see what their term limits are. Oh, they're all on the same term limit.
Right.
Yes, all right. So can I get a motion to appoint Maria Krebs and Lauren Merritt to the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Onto item number 13. Announcements of vacancies new. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027. Board of Appeals, two vacancies to fill a five-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027. One vacancy for a licensed plumber and one vacancy for a HBA representative or qualified by experience or training. Climate Action Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. Human Rights Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2026. Public Art Advisory Committee at Large, one vacancy to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. Senior Center Commission, two vacancies to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Item number 14 is announcements of vacancies previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Planning and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 25th, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we are at item number 15, which is city council information, and we can give any board updates or any thing that is for the good of the public.
Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to fill in on the ECI COG meeting this past week. It was a fairly short meeting, but a couple of things that jumped out that I think that would be nice for the council members to have on their radar mostly involved issues with transportation and transit, transit sorts of issues. So there are some federal bills that are, have gotten approval, but they're working through some of the, you know, the details, which always takes a little bit of time. Some stuff that have to do with some safe streets initiatives, which are designed to lower fatalities on roadways, so there might be something in the near future for if we have road projects or street projects that involve, you know, reconfiguring, reengineering dangerous intersections. The other one involved some of the, some of the new bills that have been moving through at the federal level that involve a support for more e-charging stations. I think those just made some headlines recently. Again, all the details of those are not, you know, hammered out yet, but we do know that there will be some priority given to certain corridors, I-80, I-380, other interstates in Iowa, but those are, you know, the ones that affect us most directly within a near proximity. I think the anticipation is that a lot of those requests for grants will come from private business owners, Casey's, Come and Go, Quikstar, those kinds of things, but there may also be some opportunities for other entities such as local government to apply for some funding to put in charging stations. So that might be, again, all those details are not available yet, but those are things that ECI COG staff said they were looking into, and so it's not a bad thing to have on our radar screen. That's all.
So we had a meeting, the JEXA Board, the, one of the, they have been, the head of JEXA has been coordinating with Sarah Nelson of Community to, as, both before the rollout of the 988 number and continuing, and they hope in the near future to be, also be able to have some community staff sit in with their, with their dispatchers to start, to start understanding how this would all work. So there's, it's not, it's not a, it's not, they're not paired up yet, but they're in communication and will continue to be.
Well, I'll give a quick little update. Last week, our deputy city manager and I were in Waterloo. We just got back on Friday from being at the Iowa League of Cities. It was a great opportunity, not only for information, which was an information overload, but just to be amongst other city elected officials, as well as staff from other cities, and have some great conversations. I did do a tour where we went through the neighborhoods and saw, it was really their affordable housing tour, and there was a lot of great takeaways. They had, the information sessions, there were a lot of topics, some of which we would anticipate would have been a part of it, which was childcare. That's something that a lot of people chimed in on, both large and small cities, that had conversations about, you know, what can we expect not only from the governor, you know, the state, but also what are some of the things that we can anticipate coming from federal, local government, and even what are ways that we can be more innovative? Childcare, childcare workers, of course, rose to the top of one of the things that we need to address, but it was a great opportunity to hear a lot from different presenters. The other thing is that they always have their legislative priorities that they kind of put before, before our legislators. There's nothing too surprising, I'm not going to go through it now, because there's actually two sets where part of the Metro Coalition, which they also did their legislative priorities, and Iowa League of Cities, and what typically happens, because I know Counselor Taylor brought this up, the council will get to set our city legislative agenda. Typically, we do that November, definitely by December, oftentimes pre-COVID. We would invite our legislators here to just have a conversation as well. That opportunity still might, you know, present itself this time around, but it was great. I would encourage people to, if your schedule will allow it, to maybe next year, mark your calendar to attend the next year's Iowa League of Cities. Whether you're going to remain on council or not, I think there's a lot, because I know we'll be up for another reelection, but I think there's a lot to gain from those opportunities. While I'm talking about just opportunities, the Iowa, I'm sorry, in Washington DC, I do go to, at the end of January, and that is to the Mayor's Innovation Project. It sounds like it's just for mayors, but it's not. It's for elected officials, and so I would encourage... And so I would encourage any individual to connect with our city clerk, Kelly, about that opportunity because it's just a lot of great things happening when you're getting around and listening to what other cities are doing that are so innovative. And I'll tell you that we have a lot of things that we can share as well on some of the things that we're doing here. So just keep an eye out for some of these opportunities, and I will hope that in the future we'll have a little more participation.
You were also going to mention the gala last week.
Yeah, yes, yes, so there were, so on last Thursday, while we were doing double duty, one in Waterloo, both Redman and I and Council Weiner and some city staff, we also had some commission members and other members of the public that represented the city at the African-American Museum. I'm going to blank on the name, History Makers Gala. And our very own first African-American mayor, Ross Wilburn, was, he made, he made, he made history, and he was, he received a reward. There were other people from our community that also received this award. It was a beautiful event, well-attended. It was packed, the spirits were high, and it was just a great way to celebrate people throughout the state that are making great change that are African-American.
It's been an incredibly busy couple of weeks, I think, for the entire community. But I'm really happy to say that I got to represent the city at the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition and talk about the great things that we are doing throughout, in terms of our affordable housing solutions. And it was just an amazing experience to be able to sort of sit there and talk about the multiple kinds of projects and ways that we're trying to address affordable housing. It is both a source of frustration because we need it so much, but there is a lot that we can be proud of. And so it was a really cool moment to be able to represent Iowa City in that way and to talk about what we have done as a council and in partnership with, with people who are out there doing the work every day. So that was a really wonderful opportunity. Additionally, the Iowa Women's Foundation had their annual luncheon, and it was fantastic because this was 25 years that the IWF has been giving out grants for different nonprofits that are there to help strengthen and bolster women and girls in Iowa. This was also the 50th anniversary of Title IX. And as a part of that, the entire luncheon was there to celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Christine Grant and her last doctoral student, who is now the Director of Diversity and Inclusion for the NCAA, was able to speak. And I believe her name was Dr. Kimberly Miller. I may be wrong on that. But it was a lovely, really heartwarming, and also just empowering and important luncheon because you could just see how every year the grind goes on. And, you know, this, this organization really has put so many people to the, helped so many people become aware of obstacles and challenges, and yet opportunities for women and girls in Iowa. So that was a really wonderful thing. And I got to actually speak with and hang out with staff in a more informal way than this kind of a setup. And so that was another really great opportunity. And then my final bit, too, is then later that evening, the City of Literature right now is in the middle of their two-week book festival, which is longer than it's ever been before, but they had so many events, they stretched it out. So kudos to John Kenyon and staff for the work that they're putting in on this. I went to the Paul Engel Award reception and talk that was with Rebecca Slotnick, who is an absolute pioneer and warrior, a climate warrior. So much of the work that she does now, she said, is very deliberately, it is, everything that she does now is with this eye on this decade of what she calls decision-making for the climate. And so she's a very staunch, strong advocate, and it was really exceptional to hear her speak. The book festival is actually going on through October 13. So anybody who loves literature and hearing people talk about literature, check out the events and go partake.
There was also the gala for the Center for Worker Justice, which was also a really lovely event. So it's celebrating 10 years of their existence and work for the community and work for the, those particularly who have suffered from wage theft and various other similar issues. So, and featured our former mayor, Pro Tem, obviously.
All right, here are nothing else. We're going to move on to item number 16, which is reports on items from city staff. We're going to go to our city manager's office.
Nothing for you today, this evening.
All right, our city attorney.
Nothing for me either, thank you, Mayor.
City clerk. All right, item number 17 is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
All moved.
Oh, second.
All right, moved by Harmsen, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.